In accord, the following is the form of announcement to be heard at the opening of each regular agenda. And with that, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular special meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. Shall we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Chase, Marvin Kobel, Robert La Court.
Here.
Cecil MacGyver.
Here.
Robert Mettler.
Here.
James Pettit.
Here.
Victor Stevens.
Here.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
Charles Alderman, Charles Oniaka, Oniaka, and Chairman Orsini.
Since there are no minutes this evening, nor resolutions, we'll get right down to discussion and vouchers.
We don't have any this evening.
None of that? Okay. Well, then we're to our first hearing, first and only hearing of the evening. The Route 27 School LLP, Plan 13-00005.
Good evening. Catherine Cope with the Law Office of Peter U. Lanfrith located at 3,000 Hadley Road, Suite 1C in South Plainfield, New Jersey.
If you could just speak right to the mic.
Sorry. Hearing on behalf of the applicant, Route 27 School LLP.
I don't think it's on. Just, it should be buttoned up front. Just tap on it.
Okay. Do you need me to repeat all of that?
No, you're good.
Okay. Okay. We are here tonight seeking approval for an amended site plan. We're proposing to make a few changes to the site plan, specifically to eliminate a modular block retaining wall, eliminate a patio from one side of the retail building, restripe a small section of the parking lot, construct a garbage enclosure, remove a sidewalk from two portions of the property, and to change the lighting timing for a small section of the property. Also, we are going to ask the board to confirm the meaning of store closing as it affects when the lights for the IHOP need to be turned off. As there is an existing agreement between my client and neighboring property owners as to when they will turn the lights off, we would like the board's clarification on the term. It's all based on when the store closes. We would like the board's clarification on what store closure actually means. To get started, I'd like to call my first witness, William Edwards.
Raise your right hand, sir. Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
And your qualifications?
Oh, sorry. Can you, Mr. Edwards, can you state your occupation, please?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer.
Licensed in New Jersey?
Yes, I'm the president of Edwards Engineering Group in Somerville, New Jersey, and I've appeared before this board numerous times.
Very good. You're accepted.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Edwards, were you the engineer of record when the plans for this site were originally drafted and approved?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And were you responsible for the changes on the plans submitted in connection with this application?
Yes, I am.
First, let's talk about the changes to the parking. Can you describe the proposed changes for the board, please?
If you refer to drawing C3 of the plan set, the only change we're proposing here is we're moving the barrier-free stalls which were originally proposed to be up against the school. We're moving them across the aisle and creating a striped crosswalk here. The reason being is that the owner felt that the placement of the barrier-free stalls, although more convenient to the building, being close to the building, they were actually safer across the aisle because vehicles coming in the one-way pattern around the building would be able to see the parking stalls, and anybody who's handicapped in the stalls would have a better line of sight to the aisle than being around the blind corner of the building. So that's the only purpose for that. The change here is a striping change only. There is no change in any parking count on the site. So we felt it was a reasonable change. And this, by the way, has already been restriped as part of construction. It was necessary to get the school open. So this change occurred probably a year or so ago and has already been in operation since without a problem. So we don't see any problem or you have no issue with that.
Okay. And can you explain to the board the modular block retaining wall that we're proposing be removed from the plan?
Yes, we originally had a small section of block wall along this end of the parking lot here where I'm pointing, up near the deli property to the side. And it was essentially a glorified curb on our plan. It was no more than a foot high, and we had proposed that only because we weren't sure what the applicant was going to do between the curb and the property line, and we knew we had a little bit of an elevation difference to negotiate. What he's done is he's actually planted a row of evergreens along here and made a nice landscaped bed with wood chip mulch. So he was able to make the grading work. It's stable. There's nothing eroding there. So we felt it was a reasonable change to make and not have him tear that out simply to put a wall on that we felt may be needed.
Excuse me. Okay. And the patio on the west side of the retail building, can you describe the changes to that, please?
Yes, originally back in 2006, 2007, when we came before the board, we weren't sure, nor was the owner, what they were going to do with the property. And it was quite common to have restaurants go on end cap. So I think at the time, we had suggested, or the board had suggested, putting an outdoor patio so that there could be outdoor alfresco seating. The owner now has a possible tenant which may lease the end cap. It's a veterinarian facility. So an outdoor patio really wouldn't work for them. However, a little grassy area where they can keep the dogs and walk them around would be a nice, you know, attribute for the site. So we'd like to eliminate the pavement, which is actually going to reduce impervious coverage on the site by a little bit, and just create the area as lawn, which would work in character with the rest of the area.
Okay. And is the other, the second proposed patio remaining?
Yes, there's a patio still at this end you can see on the plan. The other patio was similar in style to this. It would have had a small landscape wall around it just to provide a little buffering between the parking lot and the seated patrons. Essentially, this area is remaining the same as approved.
Okay. And we are proposing a change to a garbage enclosure. Can you please describe that for the board?
Yes. In the back of the site here, this bubbled area, we have a double enclosure similar to the one that's on this end. The one on this end was proposed as chain link fencing around it because it was sort of remote and off the beaten path. And we originally had shown this as a block wall structure. The applicant, the owners, asked us to come back and revisit that. We don't see any requirement for it to be blocked. We'd like to change the block wall to a screened enclosure similar to what's in use in other areas of the site, which would be essentially a chain link fence with the privacy slats in it so you couldn't see into it. And that's really the only modification. The size of the dumpster and location is exactly the same as what's previously approved.
Okay. And are there any reasons for this particular change?
Well, there was a concern over if something did back into it or a truck hit it, then the cost of replacing chain link fence would be lower than the cost of bringing a mason in to have him rebuild the block wall and put it all back together. The walls themselves that go in here are screen walls. They're not really structurally sound. They look nice, but they really don't take a vehicle impact well, so they would get damaged. So there's a concern there on replacement cost.
Okay. And replacement timing, would you say it'd be faster to replace the chain link, the proposed chain link fence as opposed to mason blocks?
Definitely, definitely. A chain link fence can go up in a matter of hours versus getting a mason out for several days and masonry work and having the masonry set up and hardened and trying to match the color of the block that weathers over time. So there's a lot of benefits to having a chain link fence.
Okay. And can you describe the proposed changes to the sidewalk at the south side of the retail building?
Yes, if you look down here at the bottom of the page and near the other outdoor patio, this bubbled section, there was a piece of sidewalk that sort of went nowhere. I guess it was just completing out the line of sidewalk around the building. And we're proposing just to remove it from the project. It really doesn't go anywhere. It didn't serve a purpose. The area will just be converted to lawn.
Okay. And can you discuss with the board the creation of what we've been describing as the creation of a phasing plan?
Yes, back in 2007, when we developed this project here, the owner wasn't sure what they were going to do with this piece, although we did have that built into a multi-use development in terms of parking count. So we had proposed a 6,500 square foot building of some to be determined shape and size in terms of stories and configuration. What we'd like to do is pull that completely out of the project. We had sought preliminary approval for that, but not final. So any development on that would have had to go back to the board for final. What we're looking to do is pull that completely out in terms of both preliminary and final and leave this as a vacant lot with lawn and just do some finishing touches around the outside of it just to neaten it up.
Okay. And what do you propose happen with the sidewalks that were supposed to be constructed at the front of that particular lot?
Right. As part of the initial application, we were asked to put sidewalk along the entire frontage we were developing. So essentially, you have sidewalk in front of the school, then you have the main driveway into the facility, sidewalk in front of the IHOP. You have a private neighboring home that we were not going to put sidewalk in front of. There was no obligation there. And then there was a proposal to continue sidewalk in front of the future office building. Since we're not building the office building now, the owner would like to forego that installation until a later date. So it gives him the flexibility when building this building of approaching construction from possibly two directions, either the highway or the parking lot, depending upon how construction equipment needs to circulate around the building. And that would prevent the sidewalk, which is really only rated for pedestrian traffic. It would protect that from getting damaged by potential vehicles down the road. He does plan to build it. He just would prefer to build that with the remainder of the improvements on this lot. So he's looking for relief from constructing that at this time.
Okay. And just to clarify, as of right now, you had mentioned accessing that particular lot from both the parking lot and the highway.
Yes.
Is it possible that due to the volume of patronage at the IHOP, that the parking lot behind the vacant lot could be full with cars and that the only access to the construction area would be from the highway into the empty lot?
That's always a possibility, yes.
Okay. So possibly ensuring that the sidewalk that, if it were to be constructed, would be destroyed and need to be replaced potentially repeatedly?
Yes, yes, without a doubt.
Okay. And have you had an opportunity to review the staff reports that were provided?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I'd like to go over.
I'm gonna go back and get an infirmary.
The staff reports.
I'm calling you.
I'd like to go over the staff reports provided by Mr. Healy as well as Mr. Houck discussing only the items that require explanation or that we would be objecting to. So let's start with the report from Mr. Healy. Comment number 1B discusses removing the sidewalk along the front of Route 27. So again, that's specifically just in order to avoid having to repeatedly construct the sidewalk?
Yes, in the event, you know, down the road when this building is built, as I testified to, it does provide the flexibility of approaching construction from more than one direction. And as Ms. Cope said correctly, that if the parking lot here is full, it really limits the ability to construct here. So it does provide more flexibility. And again, if the sidewalk is left in the front and this building is constructed, it's likely the sidewalk will get smashed up and damaged by heavy equipment. So we'd like to postpone that until such time as this lot is developed.
Okay. And in question 2A in Mr. Healy's report, he had requested clarification whether there were any plan modifications that were not listed on Page 2 of his report. Did you have an opportunity to review? To the best of your recollection, would it be your understanding of the, in addition to the items listed on Page 2, that the change in the curbing at the, or the removal of the quote-unquote retaining wall and the change in the lighting that we're proposing are additional changes that are not listed on this Page 2?
Changes, we're not proposing lighting changes.
The timing, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. But as far as you're aware, in addition to, other than those two that I just noted, all of the other proposed changes are listed on Page 2?
Correct. Right. The changes I outline here are really the only changes we're proposing. We're not changing any details. We're not changing any parking counts. We're not removing any other curbing. Everything that's bubbled up on here, on the plan here is the only thing, are the only items we're changing.
Okay. And with regard to Sheets C8 through C11, were there any changes that are the subject of the application tonight?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And then with regard to the staff report from Mr. Houck, item number 2 is already discussed. Can you clarify for the board, are we changing any curb cuts?
No, no, we're not changing any curb cuts. The main access is still through the main bidirectional driveway that was part of a prior DOT approval.
Okay.
Nothing's changing.
Okay. And are we changing the size of any of the buildings?
No.
Okay. And are we adding any traffic to or from the site?
No, we're not.
Okay. So it's the applicant's position that DOT approval is not required in connection with these changes? Okay. Mr. Edwards, thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay.
The sidewalk that you want relief from is just for that, what is it, Lot 3201 and Lot 31? That there will be sidewalks on Lot 3404 and Lot 3402?
The only, the only lot that you see, what was originally Lot 35 on the application, that's the only lot that the owner owns, the property applicant owns, that will not have sidewalk.
So it's just Lot 30, formerly Lot 35, a small, I don't know what that distance is.
It's part of the overall boundary. I don't see that distance either. It's not called out separately for some reason.
Roughly 100 feet, maybe?
Yeah, about that.
And the rest?
About 100 feet, yeah.
The rest will all have sidewalks.
Already does.
And this will, will be built when the improvements are made on site.
Yes, to that lot, yes.
That's fine.
Let me ask you, if our engineer is saying that, I mean, I've recommended at the sidewalk, that that sidewalk be constructed now. Our engineer has as well. An engineer said, "Future construction access for that future pad site, basically, will be from the parking lot area for safety." So he's saying that access to that area will be from the internal parking lot, not from Route 27. But you're saying you don't want to, you don't want to build a sidewalk in the curb now because you're gonna have construction access from Route 27?
Most likely, yes.
Yes. Okay. And in your experience, that that's something that, you need DOT approval for that?
For temporary construction access?
Yeah.
Only if there's a major driveway. People construct all along state highways without permits. You get a permit for a permanent improvement.
Our engineer is recommending, that he's saying future construction access will be from the parking lot for areas for safety.
Is there some way to create something temporary so that with the children and parents coming back and forth, that there'll be a place for them to walk if they need to walk along that?
Well, there's, there's no sidewalk in front of the lot in the middle. So what you have now, and what's finished constructing, is you have sidewalk in front of the school, sidewalk in front of the IHOP, then the sidewalk ends. There's no sidewalk in front of the private home here. So you still have a gap of no sidewalk that isn't going in as part of this project and never was.
Well, that's not, that's not true, actually. Actually, but the condition of the original approval was that you were, the applicant was to reach out to the owner of Lot 36 and see if there could be an agreement to put the sidewalk along their frontage. My understanding is that that agreement wasn't reached, and that's why the sidewalk wasn't put in. But it's not because it was never going to happen. It was, the condition was, the applicant was supposed to reach out to them and see if it could happen. Just, just so the record's clear, that's what the condition was.
It's my understanding that the neighbor was contacted and has refused to install the sidewalk on his property. So that's why it was not done.
Excuse me, he wouldn't be installing the sidewalk. He would be installing, your client would.
Yeah, it wouldn't be on his property.
He would make some accommodation or pay part of it. He refused to pay any part of it.
I'm sorry.
He wouldn't, he wouldn't have had to pay for it. The applicant would have had to pay for it, and it would have been in the right-of-way. It wouldn't have been on Lot 36's property, but I think basically as a courtesy and because he had, I think, maybe his mailbox and certain other improvements in the right-of-way, the board basically said, "Reach out to that property owner. If they're agreeable to a sidewalk being constructed in front of their property, then the applicant has to build it." My understanding is, it hasn't been built because the property owner objected to it.
Well, if this is the right-of-way and the property owner technically does not own that right-of-way, and the township wants that sidewalk built.
I'm just telling you what the, what the condition was of the planning board when the condition, when the approval was originally approved.
Do we know if it was explained to that homeowner that there was no cost or?
That I don't know. I believe that homeowner's here, so perhaps at the time of the public comment, perhaps they can be asked that question.
And I have a question for my information. Does, does having a sidewalk on that, across that vacant lot, have any impact on what the state may or may not say about whether there could be a future driveway or a curb cut into that?
Well, I, I would be, the original approval obviously had DOT approval, and they, they were approved for one access for the entire site. I would be, and perhaps Mr. Edwards could opine on this, but I would be very surprised if this planning board allowed them to have another curb cut on this site because it's supposed to be built, built as a whole. And I'd be extremely surprised if DOT was to allow a second access that close.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at is then that would, there would be, if there's a sidewalk put there now, it's not gonna be torn out?
No.
Or a curb cutter?
No.
It's not gonna affect the site plan from that point of view for that piece of property?
I think they're saying if during construction, when the construction trucks are being in and, brought in and out of the site, that the sidewalk could be damaged by those construction vehicles going over the sidewalk.
But our engineer's saying he's not in favor of using that.
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could comment, the way that site's laid out right now, they were talking about interfering with the parking for the IHOP and et cetera and et cetera. The state of New Jersey, not a lot of pile construction trucks, construction trucks on the highway to unload, they're gonna have to get on the site. So if there's no curb cut, the only way they're gonna get on the site is down the driveway and around the back, and they're gonna end up staging it in the parking lot of the IHOP. That's the only site that's available.
That's a very good point.
So the point is that, you know, the sidewalk should be put in, the curb should be put in. It's part of their DOT permit, and if it's not put in, then they should go back to DOT and amend the permit. If they want to spend the time and money doing that, we can't stop them. But I'm just saying that that's, seems to me, for 100 feet of sidewalk and 100 feet of curb, we're not talking, you know, something that's gonna break the bank, so to speak. And it should be done now. That was part of the approval. That's my opinion. I have a couple of questions for the engineer if I could ask him. The sidewalk that's being eliminated over on the patio area that's over on the right-hand side, is that part of the patio? I don't quite understand even why that was there in the first place.
I think it was there just to provide a walking access to the small pump station that's on site.
Oh, okay. So it wasn't part of the patio itself?
No.
Oh, okay. The way, the way, let me look at your drawing for just a second. This right here.
Yeah, it was just a four-foot wide sidewalk that led over to the pump station.
There's the curb line, so is this patio over there?
That's patio right there. That will hatch.
Oh, that? This is gonna be grass?
Yep.
Oh.
Basically, that's basically sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah. And then the other thing is with the chain link fence, how does that dumpster get access by the garbage truck?
This way.
Which one are we talking about?
This one here.
Oh, what's this one?
That's a generator and electrical transformer.
And that's inside a chain link fence, too?
Yes.
And that's already approved that way?
That's already built.
In front of the building. So the aesthetics of the block doesn't make any difference. I'm just going over what you were talking about. This is already a chain link enclosure approved?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So making that, making that chain link is not?
And that's also a chain link fence enclosure right there.
Okay.
Was, was the dumpster in the back left, that was approved as chain link?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay. And the one in the back right that we're talking about, is that new?
No, it's always been on the plan.
It was originally masonry?
Just a block wall, yeah.
So the one was approved as chain link and one was approved as masonry?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about the landscape buffering? Will there be any landscape buffering that's?
Well, that's, that's my recommendation. I don't see why they shouldn't, especially if they're changing from masonry to chain link.
Right.
And that's standard.
Yeah, there's all, there's also a fence along the property line, and then there's landscaping on their side of the fence. So everything that was approved on the prior plan is going in. The only difference being is the block wall, the C-shaped block wall around the dumpster enclosure is being changed to fencing with privacy slats.
But there is landscaping there.
There is landscaping as part of the original application. That's still in the project.
Yeah, but that doesn't wrap around, that doesn't wrap around the dumpster.
Strange.
It's kind of back behind the dumpster. It doesn't wrap around the dumpster.
The wall did. Yeah, the wall wrapped around the dumpster.
The landscaping doesn't.
Landscaping, as approved on the original plan, there were bushes along here, along that road. There's bushes, there's trees along here. I'm sorry, there's bushes here along the fence, and then there's a fence line. There's a solid fence, and then there's trees on his side.
Typically, we have some form of landscaping going around the sides and in the back of the dumpster enclosure. That's typical. So I'd recommend we just keep with what we normally do.
One question, was the idea of the block wall, so there wouldn't be landscaping? Or is landscaping in addition to the block wall? Or are we putting it in now because of the chain link?
Honestly, I'm not certain why the block wall.
Well, no, I mean, with the original approval, you just mentioned that the original approval was a block wall.
Right.
Was there landscaping with that block wall also?
No.
The original approval?
No, but there's, there's landscaping behind it.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. I'm just asking a question.
Okay.
So now we go to chain link. You're gonna supplement that landscaping?
No.
No, I think, I think that's where, I think that's what this is about. I mean, I think, I'm kinda.
I mean, I don't want to make a, make your case about this, but the.
Well, we're requesting that you put in landscaping.
The applicant has no objection to putting landscaping buffering around the chain link dumpster or the chain link enclosure.
And just, just for the record, just so the board understands, that this was approved before we had our commercial design standards. After that, after this was approved, we changed our commercial design standards to apply to retail developments and a bunch of other different types of developments. And you see that manifested in the developments on Elizabeth Avenue. So you'll see the world's nicest dumpster enclosures and signs matching the buildings and, you know, a very nice aesthetic, in my opinion, retail developments on Elizabeth Avenue. This was approved before then. So I think if this was approved now, we would say, make the dumpster enclosures, match the architecture of the building and the signs. This is going kind of backwards to some degree, but these dumpster enclosures are in the far left, the far rear. far left, the far rear. Customers aren't really going to see it, so I don't think it really matters that much. We're just requesting that what usually happens when you have chain link fence around the dumpsters, you put the landscaping around it.
Agreed, yeah.
And they've agreed to do that.
That's just typical.
Yes.
The only one that was surprising, if I might, that was surprising to me, is the one in the front of the building where the transformers are approved with a chain link fence right where you're looking at the building. If anything needed a block wall around it, it would be that one. But it's gone.
hindsight is what it is.
It's done. It's done. It's done. It just doesn't make sense.
Just to confirm, the number of parking spaces is not changing?
Correct.
As a result of the restriping? Okay, thank you.
When you eliminate the 6,500 square foot office space or whatever that building was going to be, that parking was where? In this site?
Yes.
So it's still there?
It's still there.
The parking for that is somewhere dedicated to that site.
Right.
Could be used now temporarily for somebody else, but that, when this building comes back in and he chooses to build it, that parking is already accommodated.
Yes, and there was, I believe, a parking variance on the original application.
A variance?
There's landscape, there's land bank parking.
For the site as a whole, and there was some land banking. Basically, what it practically, what it means is when they come in for site plan approval for that site, if the building is more than 6,500 square feet, they'll need a new variance. If they're less than that, then they'll continue to comply.
For the 6,500 square foot that he posed originally, that parking is accommodated?
That's included in this? Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'd like to call my next witness to discuss the balance of the...
One more question. The change in the light, I know there's two issues on lighting. One is the timing in terms of when it closes, but is there, was there something about the lighting, certain lighting staying on overnight for security purposes?
I'm actually going to be going over that with the property owner next.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call Mark Chappov as my next witness, so he'll discuss all of the lighting changes.
Want to raise your right hand, sir? The Assembly...
Right, all right.
Your right hand, your right hand. Does the Assembly swear for him to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, can you state your name for the record, please?
Say yeah.
State your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Mark Chappov.
Okay, and do you own the property in question?
Yes.
Okay. Part of the application tonight is changing the timing of when some of the lights get turned off. Is it true that we're doing, that you're proposing the changing of the timing of turning some of these lights off for security purposes?
Yes.
Okay. Has there been a history of people on the property after the lights have been turned off?
Yes.
Okay, and when I say the lights are turned off, it's all of the lights on the property?
Yeah, all the lights is off.
Okay, and have you been able to identify the people that are trespassing on the property after the lights are turned off?
No.
Okay, and have the people that trespass onto the property caused any damage or stolen anything?
Yes.
And what have they stolen?
They stolen cover from the manholes.
Okay, and again, you don't know who these people are and haven't been able to identify them?
No, it's not possible.
Okay.
Because it's all dark.
Okay, could you show the board on the plan that's up right now, where you propose to change the timing of the lights?
We have, one light is on the back of the building on the right side, and we have four lights on the backside total. That's what we propose. That light leads all night.
Okay, so you're proposing to leave those lights on all night?
Right.
Okay, and earlier, Mr. Edwards had stated that you have potentially, you have potentially a new business coming into the retail center that is a veterinarian clinic?
Yes.
Okay, and so it's possible that the veterinarian clinic will need the additional security of lights on all through the night?
Yes, in purpose of emergency.
Okay, okay, and are there homes located directly behind the retail building?
Only on one side, on the right side of the building, and behind the building, we have a detention basin or society hill.
Okay, so on the left side of...
So there is no houses over there.
Okay, so on the left side, there's no houses, and on the right side of the building, are the houses...
On this side, houses.
Okay, and are they close to your property line?
No, they probably like 300 feet.
Okay, and the security lights that you're proposing to leave on all night, is the light going to spill onto the neighboring property?
No.
No.
That's what's designed, just light the border of the property.
Could you tell us which lights you want to leave on again, one more time? Just point to them, please.
There is no lights here. It's because we have a different...
Well, wherever they are, you have some lights that you want to leave on all night. Which ones are they?
Okay, one light's on the right side of the building.
He's going to go to light the lighting plan.
Oh, lighting.
You got a lighting plan, okay. That'd be easier. Just so we can follow you.
Right.
What is that? What number is that?
All right.
Seven.
Seven, okay.
All right, this is the building, and one light is over here, and four lights is over here on the back, and two lights up front.
Okay, so you're pointing to the four lights along the rear of the building?
Right.
And then you have two lights on the...
Front of the building.
And then, and then one on the back portion, okay, in that back corner. So basically, seven building-mounted lights.
Seven lights.
Okay.
And all of the other lights on the property will be turned off per the agreement that was previously reached?
Yeah, yeah, that's, the rest of the lights will be off.
If those lights along the back are left on, you have, they're mounted on the building itself shining down onto the driveway area?
Yeah, they're shining on the driveway.
Or if the police car is going by or somebody's going by, how are they going to see a guy vandalizing the property in the back? I just want to know what your thinking is. I'm not arguing with you. I just want to know, how do you think that's going to help you?
At night?
At night?
Yeah, if we have at least some lights here, so the camera will pick up the vehicles...
You have full camera?
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to have a camera around.
Okay, oh, I didn't know that. Thank you.
Yeah, so...
Okay, that explains it.
How tall are the lights?
How lower? How tall? How tall? That's like probably 20 feet from the...
Are they on the building itself? Mounted on the building?
Yeah, on the building.
So they're as high as the building is?
Yeah, that's a special light, so they're like poles.
Okay.
Light poles.
11 feet. Only 11 feet high.
Yeah.
Okay, and as far as the, I want to discuss the operation of the IHOP for a couple of minutes. What are the posted hours of operation of the IHOP?
The operation of IHOP is during of the Monday to Friday. It's from 7:00 to 10:00. And Friday and Saturday, we have 7:00 to 12:00.
12:00 AM?
Yeah.
It's midnight, okay.
Midnight. And on Sunday, we come back in the regular hours, from 7:00 to 10:00.
Okay, so 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday?
Through Thursday.
Okay, and if a customer walks in five minutes before 10:00 PM on a Thursday night or five minutes to midnight, so at 11:55 PM on a Friday or Saturday night, do you serve that customer?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, so while the customer is in the restaurant, you need to keep the parking lights, the parking lot lights on, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and do you clean the restaurant while customers are in, inside?
No.
Okay, so it's, you need to keep the parking lot lights on for a period of time after the last customer leaves?
Exactly.
Okay, and is it safe to say that if a customer walks in at 11:55 PM on a Friday or Saturday night, that the lights in the parking lot could potentially need to stay on for the customer until just before 1:00 AM?
Yes, until they finish their dinner.
Okay, okay, and then for a period of time after the last customer leaves?
We start cleaning the restaurant, and it's take a while.
Okay, and previously, as part of the prior application, you had agreed to limit the time after the store closes to 30 minutes to keep the parking lights on, the parking lot lights on?
Yeah.
Okay, and did you agree to, you voluntarily entered into this agreement in order to be a good neighbor?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and have you been turning the lights off within that 30-minute window of the last customer leaving?
We try. That depends on how fast we clean the restaurant.
Okay, are there periods of time, are you required to clean the vent hoods and the grease traps?
Yes, during of the night.
Okay, and can you do that while customers are in the store?
No.
Okay, and how long?
It's impossible.
How long does that cleaning take?
Cleaning take probably two, three hours.
Okay, and how often is, how often is that cleaning done?
Probably once in six months, once in four months. Depends how the, you know, accumulate the grease and dirt.
Okay, but these are health department requirements that you need these...
Do you have an employee parking area? Do you have a parking area where your employees park?
No, employee park in the same area, just farther from restaurant.
Well, you're talking about you're cleaning the grease traps after hours in the night time. There's some employees there doing that?
No, employees not there.
Who's doing it? Who's cleaning the grease traps?
That's a special company.
Oh, you bring somebody in?
Yeah, we bring outsiders.
They're there, then the lights are on in the store, in the facility, but you don't need parking lot lights.
We still, by the law, we have to keep the...
That's why I asked you if you had employee parking, because if you were, after hours, customers are gone, you got another hour to clean the store.
Right.
You start shutting down the parking lot, but you don't. The whole parking lot is lit up then.
The problem is the whole...
I'm not arguing. I'm just asking.
No, 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 I'm just trying to explain. We can't just shut off one light or two lights.
Well, you can, but that's your choice.
No, 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 because they're all on the same switch, on the same...
All the lights are on one switch?
Yes.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
I won't argue with you. I don't quite buy it, but I won't argue with you.
Yeah, they're all on the same.
Okay.
Okay, all right, and you need to keep the lights on while employees, whether they're employees of IHOP or third parties that are coming in to do the vent and grease trap, the hood vent and grease trap cleaning, you need to keep the lights on for safety purposes, correct?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
But how often is that done? Once a month? Once every two months?
No, I said once, once in four months.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, that's just...
Well, it's an occasional...
Occasional, yeah, business.
Has anybody been complaining about that?
Have you, have there been complaints regarding the...
Wait until the public comes.
Yes, we have a complaint.
The public's here. They'll testify.
Yeah.
Okay, so is it because of the issues that have arisen while you were operating the business that you're seeking the board's clarification tonight as to what the term, you know, the agreement that you would turn the lights off within 30 minutes after the store closing actually means?
Yes.
Okay, so you're requesting that the board find that store closing means when the last customer leaves the restaurant as opposed to the posted hours?
Yes.
Okay.
That can't work.
I think just to clarify, what they're saying is, if Sunday through Thursday, the store hours is, it's 10 o'clock close, you're saying you can't have, it's difficult for you to abide by turning the lights off at 10:30, because if a customer comes at 9:59, you need to serve that customer. They may eat for a half an hour, and then you have to finish cleaning the restaurant, and that may take you to 11 every once in a while.
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
But you're, what you would like the board to determine is that if somebody's there, gets in at 9:59, they're there until 10:30, 10:45, that that half hour should mean the half hour after that customer leaves?
Right.
Okay, in case it wasn't clear, hopefully that helps.
Just a question though, isn't that awfully open-ended and very difficult to...
It's, it would be harder for us to enforce. I mean, certainly a 10:30 point is easier because it's a set point and we don't know on a given day when their customers are there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, or Madam Chairman, it's, yeah, that is exactly one of my problems with this in that it robs your neighbor of any prospect of certainty that the lights will be out at a certain time on a given evening. It's like, he has no guarantee now that whenever that these lights would come off.
Oh, I mean, is there, is there a way to prove when, you know, the last customer leaves? Do the checks have timestamps on them, you know, showing when the last customer leaves the restaurant?
Yes, we have a time on checks when last customer leaves.
If I'm the customer that comes in at 11, at 9:59, does somebody then lock the door behind me so nobody else will come in?
Yes, but if it's one minutes to 10...
I said 9:59. If I walk in your door at 9:59, then either your hostess, your receptionist, somebody goes and locks the door so nobody else can come in.
Yes, after last customer, we lock the door. I mean, 9:59, customer come, we lock the doors, yes.
Who knows what time, but, okay, so you lock the door so nobody else can come in after that?
Right.
And what do you think the average customer takes to eat? I'm right, you've been in the business.
Regularly, you need like a 15, 20 minutes to cook, and 20 minutes to...
So 40 minutes, they say, 45 minutes or something like that?
Something 40 minutes, yes.
So if he comes at 10, probably till 11, you're going to...
Yeah, by 11, we...
Possibly, you'll still be serving and cleaning up after that customer.
The problem with the restaurant, you know, if a customer inside the restaurant, you cannot tell them just, you're done.
Ejection seat.
Yeah, I mean, whatever they sitting, whatever they sitting, they sit.
So you think an hour beyond 10 o'clock is...
I would say 45, average.
45 minutes?
Yeah, average.
So by 11, certainly, we should be shutting down?
Yeah. I mean, again...
No, just, and I'm a board member. I got to vote on this, right? I'm not going to vote on an open-ended, well, maybe this, maybe that, or it'll be floating out there somewhere. If it's 11, it's 11. I mean, we need to set time. Over and above, the grease guy's working, because that's every four months, every four months, and they're going to, it's like any other maintenance project. So that isn't even an issue. I don't think it's an issue anyway. Not to me, it isn't, but I don't live there with the lights on.
I would say if you take 45 minutes average and plus 30 minutes cleaning, so that's...
I'm giving you an hour period. I'm not giving you 40. I'm giving you 15 minutes to clean up.
Okay. I'd like that, too.
Jim, you had an interesting point before.
What?
Instead of having all the lights on in the whole parking lot, I don't think it'd be a hardship to have an electrician come in and have separate switches, so that you have just a couple lights on near the building.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And then the rest of the parking lot, the lights would go out on time.
Most parking lots are set up on a, after a switch anyway, they automatically turn themselves off. You know, they just shut down when it's either dark or dusk, or they can be timed, and I doubt if they're all on one circuit. I mean, there's just too many lights to be on one circuit.
I can understand you wanting to accommodate your customers, but you have neighbors that need to be accommodated too. So by putting another switch in and having just a couple lights on next to the building, and the rest dark, darkened at the regular time.
And trust me, we try to accommodate our neighbors as much as possible, okay, but sometimes it's just out of hands. And I agree with you, there should be some lights, just a couple lights lighting on the parking lot, okay? Just, you know, accommodate everybody.
Client, tenant-wise, I read one, in one of the applications, where originally it was a professional office complex. Is that what you intended it to be, rather than a retail stores? And there was, the building in the back?
A building in the back...
Originally, I read an application that said something about professional office space.
No, that was from the beginning, professional retails.
Professional retail?
Retail, yes.
It's a shopping center. I think they put retail office, because you can have office in that zone.
Like, he has, he says he has a veterinarian coming, so I didn't know if he'd have an eye doctor and a optometrist or, I didn't know if he was kind of catering in that direction. Again, it gets back to the lighting, where you know, each one of those tenants is going to have hours of operation. Some might have night hours, let's say it's a doctor, maybe the vet even.
Yeah.
You might have late nights on Thursdays or something, so that would be a real tough proposition with the lighting.
Are your tenants, do you have mostly retail tenants?
Yes.
Okay. And it was basically true as a shopping center, they could have...
I read, I read somewhere in all my paperwork, I read something...
I think it was that 6,500 square foot building was identified as retail slash professional office. I think it was because perhaps they were thinking it could be either retail building or maybe it could be a doctor's office, but...
Yeah, but it was in the verbiage. I didn't read on the plan. I read it in some of the applications.
Is there a particular place on the site where you encourage your employees to park for the IHOP?
Oh, we can do, but they park really on the back of the parking, close to another, they're parking usually over here, on the back. So just...
You own the IHOP, right? You own it already?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're a franchise, yeah.
Right.
How many employees do you have?
We have about 30 employees.
And do they shift, or is it...
Yeah, they shift.
Okay, so 15 at a time, or... Okay, so fifteen at a time or...
Right.
Except for the cooks?
Yeah, usually we have in the store, at the same time, like twelve people.
Okay.
So, it's like that.
The new shift comes in.
Yeah, on a Saturday, Sunday, that's much more. On a Saturday, Sunday, we have like close to thirty, yeah.
On the average, are we talking about a lot of people walking in at five minutes before closing?
No, that's not much people, but even one over there.
Yeah, I know, but we've had, we've talked about these issues with other projects before. We didn't seem to have this kind of a problem. I don't know why you can't have an area for employee parking and if you want to keep that light on there, that would probably be fine. And then immediately around the building until closing, I'm not, I wouldn't be comfortable just allowing this to go through where with the wording that you can be, you have the lights on a half hour after the last customer leaves when nobody knows when that, it's like Mr. Metler said, you're filling the whole area with uncertainty.
No, that's not uncertainty because if we, in our experience, if a customer come nine fifty-nine, okay, so just plus forty-five minutes and another thirty minutes for cleaning.
Well, we should make it eleven, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's not uncertain. This is uncertain.
Well, it is if we're waiting for a customer to leave.
But customer is not gonna stay all night. They leave about forty-five minutes usually. So that's forty-five minutes plus to ten and another thirty minutes to clean up the IHOP. Trust me, I don't wanna sit there by one o'clock, too. I wanna go home.
Have you ever thought of closing an hour earlier?
Say again?
Have you given consideration then to closing an hour earlier and then working from there and then the light won't be on, the lights won't be on as late and impacting the neighbors?
I'm glad we do this, but IHOP is not allow us to do it.
And then this would probably be another dumb question since I'm not overly familiar with the restaurant business, but are there any chores or jobs that you're doing at night that could be put off until, let's say, six o'clock in the morning for your staff? Because there's a lot more likelihood that there's, it's dark but it's getting lighter, a lot less use, need for lights, no customers to worry about. Now, are there things that could be put off?
I really didn't follow you, but I understand that timing...
Are there jobs that you do at night you could do at six in the morning instead of eleven-thirty or twelve o'clock at night? So that you could close, put the lights off and then come in earlier as opposed to staying later?
Like, for example, could you clean the kitchen? Is cleaning the kitchen something you do at the end of the day?
Okay, that's cleaning on the next day, you're saying?
Yeah, like in the morning of the...
Right, the cleaning on the next day, yeah, that's what it is.
Sure, there's things that have to be done at night.
Or I can't for health reasons, health department reasons, because if I leave food in IHOP, in a couple days, it's gonna be a lot of animals there.
Okay, and if I may, with the one question that you asked about, you know, can they close the restaurant an hour earlier and then that would sort of alleviate leaving the lights on later, the problem is the way that the agreement that my client entered into was worded is that the lights would stay on for thirty minutes after the close of business. So if the hours are reduced to, you know, let's say nine PM during the week instead of ten PM, the lights, he still only has the thirty-minute window after close of business. And the issue is what is close of business? Is it the posted hours or is it when the last customer leaves? That's where we're running into the problem. Making the hours earlier, even if it's, you know, an hour earlier, doesn't necessarily alleviate the confusion about the meaning of close of store.
More agreeable if he closes, if the closing time was nine o'clock, I might be more agreeable to say instead of thirty minutes, an hour.
I mean, but it's, here's, the crux, part of the issue too is that this was an agreement that was entered into my client voluntarily. Typically, there wouldn't be such a restriction on a, you know, on a store to turn the lights off at a specific time, but my client, you know, in trying to be neighborly and trying to be agreeable and, you know, work things out with the residential neighborhood, with the residential neighbors, entered into this agreement voluntarily and after running the business for a period of time, you know, this unfortunate, it needs to be tweaked in order to make it easier on everybody, you know, both the township to enforce when they know when they're supposed to come out and enforce and my client to know, you know, to be sure that he's in compliance with the agreement that he made. He wasn't, you know, he wasn't forced into this agreement. This was something he entered into voluntarily, but it's only through the actual running of the business.
Who's the agreement with?
The neighbor, correct?
Yeah, we are the neighbor, running...
Is it a written agreement? Verbal agreement?
It's a condition in the board's...
Oh, well, it's all, okay, it's a condition of the approval. That's not, okay. Now, is there a franchise requirement from IHOP?
Yes.
And what is that? What is the franchise requirement from IHOP?
The franchise requirement, we have to close not early than ten.
Okay, so the right or what?
But they push us twenty-four hours.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, from a legal standpoint, ten o'clock is part of your franchise agreement.
Yes.
With IHOP.
IHOP.
They would like you to stay open all night, I'm sure, but...
We can't, we can't close. We tried to push IHOP close nine o'clock and they refused us and they pushed us open up twenty-four hours.
No, I said it, they would like you to open up twenty-four hours.
So, I don't know, maybe tomorrow they said, no, you have to open up twenty-four hours, then lights will be twenty-four hours on the property, so.
Boy, it won't be an IHOP.
But we've put restrictions on other establishments and other centers. It's not...
You actually did, according to what Mark just said, it is a condition of approval.
Well, I... Oh, yeah, I understand that, but it's not, for as I'm concerned, I've heard, not heard a convincing, really convincing argument that we should even change it, but I'm still open.
Well, the one thing, the conditions that have been placed on this property and then there've been one or two others have been all voluntary. There have all been kind of similar situations where we've had residential neighbors who are concerned about having lights on in a shopping center near their home and in each case, the applicant has agreed voluntarily to impose these conditions. It's not an ordinance requirement.
But it is in the resolution.
But it is in the resolution of the approval and therefore we enforce it.
That's the deal.
But, you know, for example, if they wanted to go twenty-four hours, there's nothing that would, in our ordinance, that would prohibit them from doing that. The condition is, the condition and the voluntary condition in the resolution was, you know, if they close at ten, well, then that means the lights have to be turned off at ten thirty. If they close at midnight, they have to turn off at twelve thirty. And then we have this kind of ongoing issue, kind of Hatfields and McCoys frankly, between the applicant and one or more of their neighbors about when they can turn the lights off and when they can't, exactly what the timing is.
And again, I mean, the biggest concern comes in with if there are customers in the restaurant. My client can't, for safety purposes, turn off the lights in the parking lot and have customers walking out into a pitch black parking lot, you know, and then employees that are there to clean up and comply with health code requirements, they can't, he can't have his employees walking out into a pitch black parking lot. So my client is trying, he's doing his best to comply with the, you know, with the agreed-upon condition. However, you know, store closing, in our opinion, is really when the last customer leaves because they can't do a full-on cleaning of the restaurant while customers are sitting in there eating.
We understand, or I understand, you wouldn't put people out in a dark parking lot, but we have had facilities and especially different churches who have services during the week that are very lightly attended, that would have the parking lot set up where the lights around the building could be used and the rest of the parking lot didn't have to be lit. And I don't understand why that can't be here.
I mean, that may be something that, you know, we can discuss and try to evaluate potentially. I mean, we're not, we wouldn't be prepared to say, you know, this is definitely something that can be done. In this case, we haven't evaluated that option.
Let me address this. We can't, because the all lights, they sequentially, you know, connected and they on the one switch which controlled the lights, the whole lights on the property, okay? So there is a plan to come back to board and, you know, propose some plan that's couple lights, what we install, we will install, which is gonna be lighted all night and not bothering the neighborhood. But that's a future. I mean, we will come back probably another month, but right now...
You're here tonight for security lights.
Yeah, security lights.
Yeah, well, you're here tonight for approval for that. So that right away is a different circuit. You're turning down all your parking lot and then you're turning on the security lights. So that's a separate circuit right away. You've already got more than one circuit. You know, it's not one switch that turns on and turns off all the lights if we approve you keeping those lights on at night.
No, we here today for the back building.
Yeah, but they're a separate circuit. We're talking about the lighting of the whole site. It's not just one light, it's the whole, the whole skycine or whatever you wanna call it. It's the whole lighting plan that you're discussing.
Well, if I, if I may...
As with quality of neighbors, the lights.
The security lights that we were discussing are mounted, if I'm understanding, if my memory serves correctly, they're mounted to the building. The lights that, the lights that are involved with the IHOP are these out here, outside lights that are controlled separately.
I understand fully. You told me that you turn a switch on and all the lights go off. You turn a switch and all the lights go off. So right away, that's not true because the security lights are a separate circuit. When he turns the lights off in the IHOP in the parking lot, the lights in the back don't go off because they're gonna be on all night.
No, it's all of the parking lot lights that are controlled by, it's all of the parking lot lights, the poles that are...
No, no, no. These, these lights over here for the back building, that's a separate.
That's separate.
Right, but the lights here, which is only for IHOP, that's a separate switch.
Oh, just the IHOP lights, it's not all the parking lot lights?
Yeah, we're talking about IHOP. We...
So the parking lot lights for the retail in the back is not on this circuit?
No, that's, that's a different issue. It's a different lot, yeah.
When you were talking about it, you didn't clarify.
Okay.
It was all one circuit.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it didn't make sense. That's why I said, that doesn't make sense to me.
No, no, only IHOP lights is on the one.
So that's all we're talking about is the IHOP lights?
Because it's on a timer. All of them on a timer, the same timer.
Do these lights have shields on them so that the light doesn't spill onto the neighbor's property?
Well, I mean, we have lights here on the plan, which is, has a candlelight where the lights, where the lights are lighting really. So we not really go to another property. The lights not going to another property.
I think the difficulty here is the proximity. They do have the standard shoebox lights, but the property, the one particular property that's affected here is the lot, if you look on the site plan, it's basically between the IHOP and that sixty-five hundred. It's basically a kind of a donut hole.
Is that the one single-family lot?
Yes, one single-family lot and the shopping center basically surrounds it.
Right.
So it's difficult to not affect that lot at all, even though the lights are, you know, standard shoebox lights. They have, you know, controls.
Right, okay.
You know, but...
Don't be talking about the freaking neighborhood.
Is there, you had said that the employees park along that back. I'm just wondering, I'm thinking maybe perhaps, you know, Mr. Thomas raised the question again about, you know, having certain lights on later into the evening and involve having two different circuits.
But it's, like I said, impossible right now because I have to dig in the whole parking lot then to turn, to put them on a...
It's not impossible. You just have to, you'd have to get electrician out there and change the wiring. It's not impossible.
No, wiring under the ground and they go sequentially connected from pole to pole.
So you're saying having two different, two different, having two different areas, two different circuits is impossible?
Yeah, that's impossible right now because they all connected one wires, go all the way to...
We can put, I'm sorry, we can put a man on the moon, but we can't have two different circuits?
Sure you can, you just have to...
I mean, we can, but, Mark, this, like, you have to dig in the park.
Would it be fair to say that it would be cost prohibitive to have to rip up the parking lot and rewire the poles, the parking lot poles? Is that by impossible? Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
I have to dig in the whole thing.
There's conduit in between each, each light. You would just pull another wire through the conduit.
You'd have to rip up anything.
Yeah.
It's not, it's a simple job. It's not a big, multi-million dollar task.
And what I'm getting at is that I think the lights that affect the neighbor the most, I would think, and when you look at the lighting plan, there's that one light that's pretty much right on the property line that kind of lights up the loading area and then there's the two lights in the parking lot right behind it. And those are the lights that immediately surround that property owner. If those lights were to be, and there's the one, I guess, to the right behind the sixty-five hundred square foot building, if those four lights that immediately surround him were turned off and then some other lights somewhere else on the site remained on later to accommodate your, your needs, I think the impact on them is significantly reduced because the lights that immediately surround them would be turned off. I think the complaints from them would go away and be abated and at the same time, you'd be able to accommodate your, I think, practical, I think the concern here is, I think their needs and, you know, what they're explaining to you, I think, is real practical, it's a real practical problem. They have customers.
The lights that surround your neighbor could be put off at ten o'clock and you can still keep some other lighting on.
They just need to figure out then where they're gonna park, have their employees park.
I can consult with my electrician guy, yeah, and see what I can do.
Good.
Yeah, that's I can do.
Very good.
Good, good.
But if that's in the resolution that we pass, it's understood that it's more than just see, see what I can do. It's what we expect to be accomplished, right or not?
Yes, I think you definitely have to have some parameters. I think the beginning point of that is that the four lights immediately surrounding that neighbor would be turned off and then they would have to specify on the plans which lights would remain on. And I think, so it's, I'm assuming it's the light immediately behind to the back left of the IHOP, which is, you'd need that for access to the building. Then there's that double light kind of immediately behind it in that, in that parking lot island. I'd assume that would have to remain on. And then presumably some in the bigger, larger parking area next, you know, behind the retail building, that may, perhaps that's where your employees park. And there's some, you know, kind of maybe three or four lights in the middle of the site there that remain on for while your employees are working. But again, the four immediately surrounding the neighbor are turned off.
I'll try. Like I said, I'm gonna talk to my electrician and see what I can do and I come back.
Is there any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to open to the public if there's not.
So, second.
Open to the public. Anybody coming forward, please state your name and address into the microphone. Is there a microphone there? No. And be sworn in, please.
I'm gonna raise your right hand, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name is?
My name is James White. I'm their neighbor from the IHOP. I'm the painting the butt or whatever you wanna call it for the IHOP. I was wondering if anybody had the resolution of the IHOP that when we first said it, when it was gonna go on, what was supposed to all happen. Well, I have had, since the IHOP's been open, I have had problems with the garbage man. I had problems with the early morning bread guy. He comes like quarter after three in the morning. The garbage man was coming at quarters after three in the morning. I got a problem with my privacy fence. It's not a privacy fence. They say that there's one circuit for the lights. Well, the way it goes is goes, interior lights go off like ten thirty. The streetlights go off about quarter to twelve, or I mean, quarter to eleven. And then the building lights go off the latest, that and the street signs. So that's around quarter to twelve. So, but what really gets me is this, when the lights are on, the light, the inside lights go off at ten thirty and now the building lights itself, it's got that security light or whatever you wanna call it over the backside door facing to my house, that it stays on till late at night. I've got pictures to show you if you wanna see.
Is that the brightest light that bothers you the most, the security light?
Well, no, the other lights, the, their parking lights light my whole backyard up. And that security light and the building lights light up the whole side of the house where I have to close my blinds, pull the curtains so you don't get the lights in at night till one o'clock at night. They do the cleanings, they say, once a month or, I mean, once every four months, six months, whatever it is. They have a steam jenny out there that's a gas-powered at eleven o'clock at night. You hear the steam jenny going vroom and then you hear the steam kick in and then, I mean, it wakes you right up out of a sound sleep. You know, they could be possibly doing it on the other side of the building so where they don't have to be waking me up at eleven o'clock at night. But no, I have to call the cops twice for that. And like I said, I got pictures where you can see, like I asked for a privacy fence. If you look at the blueprints that you got, it says privacy fence on it. Mr. Walker, I'm not Mr. Walker, but Dr. Chase is the one that said this board on board. I said, as long as I don't have to see him, smell him or hear him, I'm happy. And I got everything. I can see him, I can hear him, I smell him. I got the garbage man coming. I finally got rid of that. Now he's coming at seven o'clock in the morning, but I still got the bread man coming. And they were supposed to put a sidewalk across in front of my property, but the only reason why I wouldn't let them put the sidewalk across my property is it's taken more of my front parking spot away. Plus, there's a fire plug right there in the way. I'm asking from where they stopped their sidewalk, if they plugged it a little bit closer to twenty-seven and followed it down, it'd be more in line with what's in front of the doctor's office and what's in front of the church. The doc, what's in front of the doctor's office and what's in front of the church is right on twenty-seven. I don't really wanna see it right on twenty-seven. I figured maybe a foot, foot off the curb where you can start the sidewalk and then you got your four foot in there. So like, you're taking five foot more out of my front yard, not six or seven more feet out of my front yard. Because I, the way it stands now, I use the whole front of my yard as a parking... of my yard as a parking spot. Which, you put the sidewalk in there, you're not going to be running across it all the time, and you're talking about the, on the other side of my property, how they don't want to put the sidewalk in because they're going to, afraid of cracking it all up, but if you put a sidewalk across in front of my yard, I'll be running across it and cracking that all up. So if they put it out a little bit further, so I don't have to run over the sidewalk, they can run the sidewalk to wherever they want to run it, I don't care. But as it stands now, they would have to move the fire plug, and I don't know where they're going to put that, and they, I don't want them to put it any farther into my yard, and then I won't even have a park, a place to park. What else is there, uh, with the lighting, I told, I told you about the lightings, so here, let me give you some of these pictures to show you that, uh, but I, I got to go through every day.
Are those pictures that you took yourself? Are they dated?
Yep.
No idea.
Excuse me, do you have a driveway now? Is there a curb in front of your property? Is there a curb, no sidewalk, but a curb? Is there a cut in the curb so you can drive in?
Yeah.
So you do have a curb cut for your house?
And all across the front of the whole properties.
No, no, I, I, your particular property, you have a curb cut and there's curving there.
Yeah.
So the sidewalk would go in on the highway wherever they located, but it could go across the front of your property, just like it does in my house.
I have no problem not going across the front of the property.
Well, they don't have control over that, only the state has control over that, the state's going to tell them where they can put it.
Yeah.
That you, neither you nor I can do that, the state has the standard.
Okay.
If you put it in, it's going to go where the state tells.
Yes.
Do you have another set of those that we can look at? I have no idea what the board is looking at in order to try and address some of them.
Here you go.
Well, I can see where the fence does not create privacy.
Look, there's one picture there showing how the backyard's all lit up from their lights.
Yes.
Oh, and, uh, that back building, that their building were finished off, there's pictures there where the snow on the blue roof is just falling right off of it, that's a hazard in the meantime. Across the whole front, the side. And, uh, you got the pictures of the, uh, the privacy fence, and there's pictures of, there's the picture of the bread truck, 3, 3:19 in the morning. Here, uh, you got, uh, states what time the IHOP is open and closed, but now, talking about my, uh, privacy, here's a flyer that goes out in the newspaper to all the people around, and now, I feel like without my privacy fence, I'm now, I got Franklin, South Brunswick, North Brunswick, Princeton, everybody around me can come and see what I'm doing in my backyard. I, I feel like I can't go out and have peace in my own backyard. Have no privacy.
So it's an angle, I guess.
How tall is the fence here?
That's eight foot.
It's eight foot, so, but you're saying that people can see over the...
They can see through it.
Through it, through it.
I'm just trying, I'm still trying to get...
They build per, per the plans, and I think, actually, originally, they, they did construct a fence that I think was six foot high.
No, it was eight foot.
Correctly from, I think...
It was eight foot, but it had a three foot slats in it.
That's what it was, okay.
That was the wrong fence.
You're, that's...
I said, I have, I want a privacy fence, I said, that's the wrong fence, they came back and gave me a six foot wide board, the same kind of fence that I, that said I was the wrong fence.
It was a few years ago, so thank you for correcting me.
Yes.
I remember that they had to change the fence.
But it's still not a privacy fence.
It's, I'm just putting, I'm just putting it on the record that what is up there now is per the approved plans. The fence that they put up originally was not, and we made them tear...
Well, no, because if you look at the...
No, it's not, it's, I'm telling you it is per the approved plans, and we made them tear down the original fence and put it up per the approved plans.
If you look at the, at the blueprint, it says privacy fence on it, the only one that said a fence like that was Dr. Chase.
If you Google privacy fence, this fence will pop up, I did, I did exactly that.
How can you, how can you say it's a privacy fence when you can see through it?
Sir, it's per the approved plans.
And you can also see through it when you, if you look straight on, you don't see through it, if you look on the angle, you can see everything through it.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't know the answer to your question either, but it's, I guess it's all in the eye of the beholder, what's a privacy fence? If I'm looking at it head-on, I can't see you.
Yeah, but who, but the...
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just explaining.
But the parking lots are behind me, you can see through the whole side of my fence.
Because I could look through, I could look through the slats.
It's a different story if it was the just back part of the fence.
I could look through the slats.
Yeah.
And so can you, and so can the lights, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying...
But that's not a privacy fence that I asked for.
Well, I don't know what you asked for, I wasn't...
I asked for a privacy fence.
Well, that's what they consider a privacy fence, I guess, I don't know.
Well, if you, would you, would you like that in your backyard?
Depends.
Well, have them in public to see all, what you're doing.
Depends on who my neighbors were.
Well, now, well, see, now, I don't have no neighbors, I have, everybody is a neighbor. Now, that's not right, I, I feel as that's not right.
Well, I, it's a fence, and it's a board, it's a board board, and if you, if you're head-on to it, 90 degree, it, it, you can't see anything, if you start going off to the right or to the left, because of the way the boards are, you're going to see between the boards, you do.
Yeah, but...
You should add a stockade fence, that would be the thing for you to have.
I asked before, you could, you could see on the right-hand side of my property, you can see into it, on the left-hand side of my property, you can see into it, and if you stand right next to the fence in the back, you can see the whole parking lot.
If you stand next to it, of course, it's, what, is it six feet high?
It's eight foot high.
It's eight foot high, and you can see the whole parking lot if you stand next to the fence, okay.
Pretty close.
Take your word for it, I'm, I'm not here, I'm not going to argue with you.
Well, you got pictures there where you can see what, you know...
No, I'm looking at your pictures.
You can see, you can see...
I see what you're talking about, I know exactly what you're talking about, and it all depends on the angle that you take the picture and looking at the fence, that's all I'm telling you.
It's basically, I'm standing almost in my middle of the backyard and taking these pictures and...
Yeah.
See...
No, I'm, you're right, it's okay, I, I understand what you're telling me, just listening to you.
Well, that's all I really have to say, but...
Well, the, the purpose of this hearing is for the changes that they're proposing. Have you heard the changes that they're proposing?
Yeah.
Do you have any, and specifically, we spent a good amount of time talking about the changes to the timing of the lighting and changes to some of the lights to the rear of your property, do, I think it might help the board if you have any comments on that.
Well, my, my, my thing is, if they say they're closing Sunday through Thursday at 10 o'clock, right, wouldn't you think they would turn, leave the inside lights on, turn the building lights out so you know that they're closed?
Inside?
They, they have their building lights on, right?
Okay.
Now, when it says 10 o'clock, nothing goes out, like, closing times 10 o'clock Fri, uh, Sunday through Friday or Thursday, at 10 o'clock, okay, all, all the lights are on, parking lights, building lights, signage, interior lights, I can see cleaning, that's a go, I can't stop from doing that, I would want them to clean it anyway because I wouldn't want a smelly place alongside me, but they could at least turn the building lights off to let people know that they're closed, leave the interior lights on until the customers are gone, the, the back parking lights, like, the, the parking lights itself, you, you can see that it's got my backyard lit up, but it's not where it's shining into the house, lighting the house up itself.
So the main, okay, so, so I guess what I'm hearing, and, and correct me if I'm not reading you right, is that in addition to what we discussed before about the lights, the four lights that are closest to your property, the parking lot lights...
That would be like...
In addition, in addition to that, you would like them to turn off certain lights on the IHOP building?
They can leave the parking light, lights on, but turn the building lights off.
Okay.
Yeah, she's a facade, like, the exterior of the building that's lit up, that's what you're talking about.
The one by the loading platform.
The lights that light up the building on the exterior.
The one on the building facing him.
Okay, got you.
Because that bothers me more than the parking light lights do.
Understand, understand.
That's, that's lighting the inside of the, my interior up, with my lights out.
Is this the light that's on the building that lights up the loading area, or is it more than just that one light?
It's the whole side of the building.
The whole side?
It's the, the light right over top of that side door they got, and the whole...
It floods the wall.
Oh, it's the flood?
The floods, it floods the wall.
Gotcha.
If you drive by in their clothes, you can see, it's an IHOP building, you know, you can see the building, he doesn't want to see the building.
Did you have any response to that request?
Yeah, we tried to light off.
Turn the building light off?
Turn, turn the building light off.
Yeah, the exterior lights of the building.
As long as there's sufficient light in the parking lot.
Well, I mean, it, it, one of his concerns is, it sounds like the building lights are just, are, are just architectural, do they serve any security purpose whatsoever? The ones that are lighting the...
It should be, it's a security, right, when building light off, it should be even light off all night.
But from the, from the photo, I remember seeing a light...
A security light, yes.
Is this the light, some of the lights that, that light up the facade, that light up the building?
It lights the building up, plus the, that, uh, it's like the exit light that's over top of the door.
Okay, so, I got you.
And we have these lights here that flood this wall, it's those lights, the lights...
Those lights?
That are flooding the wall.
Like, if, uh...
Okay, and then an exit light that's also part of it.
Yeah, and the exit light is the brightest, every, I mean, I could stand inside, turn the lights off, and have, I can read a newspaper almost.
Understand.
The only concern I have about that one is that may be secu, a security light that might be required by code, so that may be, that may be more of an issue of maybe changing the light.
We'll point you down to, just...
They already, they have, they went, I, I asked them, they put a shield over, but the shield's not really doing anything. They need a whole thing that's like, the lights up here and the shields down here, you know, where it shines straight down and not all over the neighbor's yard and everything.
And what about the, there's, there's a, um, a freestanding parking lot light, yeah. Okay, and then there's also a parking lot light that's pretty much right up along your fence, the fence there.
That would be nice to have it turned off too, but I, I'd be happy with the building lights out.
Okay.
And that, a side light, so I don't have to, I can't, so I, you know, I have peace at night.
Yep, okay.
And get rid of the, uh, bread man that comes at 3:15 in the morning.
Well, we can't, I'm in control of who is coming to the parking lot, that's why we're asking for a security light, because anybody can come and stop over there in parking lots.
I'm not asking you to turn off all the lights, I'm asking you to turn off the lights that are affecting me.
No deliveries before 7:00 AM. That a bread man's got. Yeah, it's our responsibility, exactly, exactly. That's easy, we'll call them the exterior facade lights, or, we've got to give them a name so we can put it in the resolution.
Yeah.
Part of the original resolution states that there will be no deliveries before 7:00 AM.
We have a much, much later...
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah, exactly, just like that, yeah, just that, so, wall wash, wall wash, wall wash.
Picture there. Saturday, Saturday mornings, so they're at 3:15.
Well, that needs to be changed, the, the bread deliveries, is there any way to contact the, uh...
Yeah, we did already.
Yeah, they went from one side of the building to the other side of the building.
This is a single case when he come early in the morning, okay, and we talked to them when they get this picture, we talked to the company, and we say, we don't want to see you on the property, uh, at least by 7 o'clock.
Right.
Okay, and they agree, there is no more cases was pictured.
Could you do the same thing with the garbage?
Okay, so, uh...
I'm sorry, what was, what was your...
Could you do the same thing with the garbage pickup?
Well, the garbage pickup is straightened out, that's already...
Oh, okay.
Straightened out, now it's the bread guy.
Forget it, he's happy with that, that's all.
Yeah, but this is, was one case.
No, Saturdays, Wednesdays...
They're not coming, uh, by 7 o'clock.
You want, okay, all right.
You're saying it's one vendor.
And I think they're not proposing to change that, so it's a matter of enforcement, right, you're not proposing to change, the requirement in, or the condition in the resolution is that no deliveries before 7:00 AM.
Before 7:00.
They're not proposing to change that.
No, and my client, if my client needs to follow up with the vendor to remind them that the, that the delivery time is no earlier than 7:00, my client will follow up with the vendor.
That's fine.
Because we can't control them, they can come, we can't...
Now, that's basically my concerns.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else that would like to... John?
Want to raise your right hand, sir? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name?
John Walker, neighbor on Claremont Road. We've had an awful lot of discussion tonight about what was in the resolution, I'd like to know how many of you have a copy of that resolution right now? It's five pages long, I'm wondering why we're even having this hearing tonight, and that you plan on taking a vote on these changes and on other conditions?
What is, what is this matter? I mean, the applicant came forward and explained the changes that they're asking for, that's the, that's the, the subject of this hearing, is the changes that they're proposing right now.
But we've referred back to the resolution how many times tonight? So why don't you have a copy of that resolutions in front of you right now? It's an oversight, don't you think?
So what's, what are your concerns?
Well, there, there's a lot of concerns, you just heard a lot about the lighting. I mean, as, as a neighbor who rides by on Route 27 usually two, three, four times a day, I can see the lights on in that place, the interior lights now, sometimes at 1:00 or 1:30 in the morning, and I've had a conversation with Mr. Dominich, he's seen the same thing. Why isn't he here tonight? Why isn't the applicant's attorney here tonight, who actually was involved in the...
I am the applicant's attorney.
I understand that.
And I'm here from the planning department.
But I'm, I'm talking about, uh, Mr. Lanfrith.
Mr. Lanfrith wouldn't be able to offer any testimony, whether his presence here, you know, my client is represented, Mr. Lanfrith wouldn't be able to testify as to anything he's seen.
I'm just wondering why you proceeded tonight, when so much of the conversation has been about five pages of conditions on this resolution dating back to 2007.
That's not the subject of this hearing, the subject of this hearing is the changes that they have.
But you made it the subject of the hearing for all this other discussion, other than what the applicant, the new changes that the applicant is requesting, so you've allowed this testimony and stuff.
We have our...
So now I'm saying to you that maybe that resolution and conditions in that resolution should be in front of all of you right now.
For what?
Because we've, we've had testimony tonight that there's violations of the conditions of that resolution.
And, and our office has been dealing with those probably on a monthly basis for the last four, five years.
And, and that's correct, so, and mostly with Mr. Dominich, uh, as the zoning officer of the township, is that correct?
But with, well, no, actually, most directly with Barbara Lessick, who's the zoning inspector, sometimes Vince gets involved, sometimes I've been involved.
Okay, so, so you're familiar with some of those complaints?
Absolutely, I've been involved in this from the beginning, I'm the director of the department, been aware of this issue from the beginning.
Well, I'm just wondering why, uh, let me, let me just say something, okay, because I don't get the whole gist of this, we have a professional planner, he's the head of the planning department, we're the planning board, we have a professional engineer, we have a professional zoning officer, I guess, I don't know if that's a licensed position or not, but the point is that we, this gentleman comes to the planning board and he advises us through reports and through being here, when an issue comes up, he was here when, I wasn't here in '06 when the thing got approved, he knows the whole resolution, he knows what it's about, we rely on him, we don't need to read the Bible to have it explained to us, we know what it says, he, he explains it, and then that's good enough for us, that's That's what we pay him for.
And he's, and, and that's why I keep stressing that.
And it's not the issue.
The applicant, the purpose of this hearing are the changes that the applicant has outlined to the board. So, for example, the problem of, of, of the truck, a, a bread delivery at seven AM, frankly, that's not the subject of this hearing. That's an enforcement issue. They're not proposing to change that condition. So, it's not even the subject of the hearing. The subject of the hearing is these physical changes, and then the lighting issue, which we've discussed at length.
And the gentleman affected by the truck told us what he wants, and it seems like we've got some kind of agreement or cooperation. I don't know if that's true or not, it looks that way. So, that's all we. Well, there's not a, excuse me, Mr. Pettit, but there's not a history of cooperation here. There's been more of a history of uncooperation.
Oh, John, you, I don't know that, I don't know that.
And I'm familiar with that because I've been actively involved in this situation myself. So, uh, just, just for the record to say, uh, there's been promises made here in several different areas, going back to the original hearings, and those promises were broken.
I'm, I'm sorry, if I may, if we can keep the comments limited to the, to the topic of the application, please.
John, we, we, uh, we, we've tried to help your friend. Uh, we, we've bent over backwards, really, by entertaining these, these other items that really aren't before us tonight. Um, and they, technically, they're right. They're not things that we should be considering tonight.
But you have opened the discussion up to those items.
Yes, and we're gonna close it now, too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did he, Mr. White have another?
Uh, would you like to come forward again? You have the right to do that.
I just wanted to say one more thing. I've been playing with Vince Dominich for five months about these lights, and nothing happened. That's why I'm here complaining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll enter a motion to close to the public.
Seeing no one, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion among the board members, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, is there anything more that you have?
Uh, no, we have nothing further.
Okay.
If I could just.
Go ahead.
I, I think it's relatively straightforward. I, I think the one thing that we should clarify before a motion is made is a matter of the, the lighting. Uh, Mr. White had indicated that the, the main things that are affecting him are the lights to the, I'll just say to the, to the, on the right side, the loading area, and that's the area that's between his property and, and the IHOP building, um, that the, the light that's above the loading area, um, first of all, that, that might have to remain on for, for security purposes. But at a minimum, the applicant should, he's requesting that the applicant look at much more effective screening. I think some of the photos show, and it has been changed already based on his concerns, at least in the photos, it seems that it's not solving the problem. The other issue was the, the, I'll call it the wall wash lighting, that's kind of similar to the lighting behind there. Can't imagine that's for, security reasons whatsoever, it's for aesthetic and architectural reasons. I can't see why that light needs to stay on a second past ten o'clock.
Yes.
Um, so I think they should take care of that. And in the photos, it does show that that does cause some glare.
Yes.
Towards Mr. White's property. He had indicated that the, the, the freestanding parking lot light is less of a concern, but he would like the applicant to, that would be good too. I think, so, might want to consider whether you want to have that as some sort, sort of condition. And I think he was less concerned about the lights in the parking lot. So, I just wanted to frame those issues as part of a.
I think we have one other possible one, too. I, I'd like to see part of the motion include the sidewalk across the entire frontage. And, uh, truthfully, I didn't hear anything that would have convinced me, without opening up another long, long discussion, but I didn't hear anything that's a real reason why it shouldn't be across the entire frontage, including the neighbor. It's, it's unfortunate, uh, with his parking situation, but the land where the sidewalk would be is not technically part of his front yard. It's silly to have a sidewalk with a broken link that can be, that actually can be fixed. Now, I don't know what we do about that at this point here, or how you include it, but if it's possible, I'd like that, I'd like that to be part of it.
Yeah, that's up to the board how you want to word it. Again, the original wording was basically, as I said before, uh, to work it out with, with, uh, you know, if they didn't object to it being in their front yard. Mr. White, I believe, basically said he wasn't, uh, didn't object to it entirely, but he would suggest he would like that it be basically along the curb, as opposed to a few feet off of the curb, uh, so that doesn't, I guess there's some, he's a little tight in parking. Looking at it, I. Yeah.
But the, but the state would have something to say about it, or would.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know if they would or not, but I mean, it, just eyeballing, it looks like they might be able to angle it. So, you might want to condition them, you know, basically repeating the original condition, that they, um, you know, meet with Mr. White and see if that's something, some, a design can be worked out that he doesn't object to. Or you could just flat out require them to do it. That, that's up to the board.
That wouldn't also include the sidewalk in front of the, the lot that's not being developed right now.
Yeah, well, that's just, that's just whether the board wants to require them to do it now or not.
Yeah, but is that gonna be considered an unfair burden on the applicant? Because there may be issues beyond his control now?
That's their frontage.
What's that?
That's just their frontage.
Well, that part, I think, yes.
And if they don't do it, they gotta go back to DOT and get another permit. So, it would be cheaper to do it, frankly.
I'm sorry, if I, if I may, just really quickly, as far as the placement of the sidewalk, I was just, um, speaking with my engineer, and putting a sidewalk with one foot away from the curb just isn't safe. It's entirely possible that a truck driving close to the edge of the road could clip someone walking down the sidewalk if the sidewalk is within a foot of the curb. It would need to be at a minimum two feet from the curb.
Um, Ms., Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I can think of places all over town where we have sidewalks that actually join the curb, uh, including, uh, Franklin, uh, Hamilton Street, that new, and Franklin Boulevard, where that new building is going up now.
Places on Easton Avenue.
Right, so, I, I, I'm terribly sorry. I, I, I don't entirely buy that.
The, uh, the project here proposes a four-foot wide sidewalk, okay? If you want a sidewalk that adjoins a curb, typically, we make them six feet wide, that provides a two-foot buffer zone that someone could choose to walk on or not, but provides you that four-foot lane with the two-foot offset. Okay, I know it's very common in cities and other urban areas to have sidewalks above a, a curb line. I, as a professional engineer, am not gonna put a four-foot wide sidewalk one foot off a state highway. If you want, if you want to tell me to have the applicant make it a six-foot wide sidewalk, that's different, okay? However, the sidewalk's gonna run through this fire hydrant that's out in front.
The sidewalks that you've already put in, where are they at?
Excuse me?
Sidewalks that you've already put in, how are they? Where are they right now?
They're four feet wide.
And what's the separation from the curb?
I think they're about two and a half to three feet off the curb.
So, do the same thing.
That's fine.
If you have to relocate the hydrant, you gotta relocate the hydrant.
Well, I mean, you're asking the applicant.
I'm not asking, I'm just saying, if that's what's required, then you got, somebody has to do that. If we ask you to put the sidewalk in and it requires that, unless you can get approval to do it differently, then that's up to you.
I can't speak to that, I'm not the applicant.
No, I, I, when I say you, I'm, I'm not talking to you personally, I'm talking to you, applicant you, you know, as your position. If we require it, you gotta figure out how to do it.
Since there's gonna be a new school built off Clermont, it would not be impossible for children to be walking along that sidewalk.
We already had more sidewalk put on at Clermont with the other development.
And having it, uh.
Connect everything.
I feel for safety purposes, uh, I don't think it's unreasonable to have it back more than a foot, if there're gonna be children walking along, especially with the speed limit that it is.
It was also part of the original approval. It wasn't an issue at that point in time, whether he built the sixty-five hundred square foot building now or later, that was not an issue in far as his approval was concerned. Maybe it's a situation of trying to get off the bond or something, and then we try to cut down on the cost, because he can't, he can't finish his entire project. I'm sure he bonded the whole thing. I'm guessing, I'm not sure it is, but it seems to me we're trying to cut down on the amount of work to be done, so that now the bond can be reduced to something he can afford. I don't know, he's probably paying a good penny every, every, you know, to renew the bond, for as long as that job's been sitting out there. It's been there a long time. So, maybe that's what's behind it. But in any case, his approval required the sidewalks, let's put them in and be done with it.
Okay.